But we know the end. I didn't figure, I didn't figure, I didn't figure we'd have to do what you told me yesterday.
And I said, there's, there's.
Yeah. That's right.
Make sure that she has a caution that she pay.
Right. But if she don't continue paying the taxes on it, they're gonna throw her out anyway. The kids are coming to pay the taxes on it.
But if they do that, it's not, she doesn't pay tax.
No, I'm just saying, he's paid, they're, they're gonna pay it.
But I'm pleased with how he's been paying his taxes. So she's not living there.
Well, she wants to live there as long as she can. Somebody told me she was gonna go try to live with a daughter somewhere, but I guess that's backfire. She looks good. She looks way better than I thought she was gonna look. And the church has been coming to mow the yard and the church has been helping her and. So. So I don't know.
I don't know. I did. That's what I. Oh, it is, it is.
Watch what I said. Whatever it is, it is. You know, she's starting to fuck.
I know why there is. Maybe she don't know that those people are gonna come around.
Don't say that. Don't say that. I don't know how many times she redo it.
I don't know.
Okay. Oh, Lord. What's up, Judge? You good? Everybody good? Everybody good today?
Yeah.
Everybody mad today?
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on.
Well, Shannon, we ready to go?
Hey, Chrissy, you, Chrissy, you still gonna talk to her, huh?
Yes, sir. I was gonna ask you, do you want me to call her and verify?
And she don't have whatever papers she needs, you please place up her, or give it.
Shannon, are we being recorded or ready to go or what?
Ready to go.
Ready to go. Okay. Good morning, everyone. It's September 30th, 2021. It's 10 o'clock. And we're in a regular session of the commissioner court. And we're here to look at several different items and I do call a meeting to order. We do have a forum here and all these any guesses here today. Here to deliberate and take action on the following items. And wanted to discuss and approve the updated purchase of financial bank depository contract signature cards. Ms. Ginger?
I received letters from the office and the sheriff's office, and I need changes in my office as well. Since we've got new employees, we need to change and update our signature cards. And sheriff's office, some questions and changes on them. So I have all the letters and I just need y'all, y'all's approval for me to get it changed. When the bank gets them all changed and we get all signed, there'll be something else I might have to go through court. Do I need to send a letter of mine to this town? Do you have changes?
Yeah, I wrote some that we, to be brought, remember, and you can tell me who would wait until after the first of the year.
Okay, yeah, and I'll include Melissa.
Okay, if it gives approval today through the court, when will these take effect?
When they're, we get them all signed, probably, well, they know we're in the change, so it should be effective when I let those later. They just got to print out all those bank accounts and there's like four or five pages to each one, so.
So soon, soon as you, the court approves these new signatures.
I'll take that letter to the bank and they'll get started.
You will start the process.
And Melissa, if you're gonna change yours, I need to know who you need to take off there. If it gives me a letter, the suit or the bill.
I had sent that probably a year ago. I'll do it anyway.
If you're gonna have changes in your office, just be sure those are gonna be the ones that's gonna ride on there. Because it's a lot for the bank to have to go through to know what to do all that, so that's why I'm not keeping it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
After y'all agree.
Who, who, who would know who is responsible for what signatures? Only you or each department?
Each, okay, all the.
Would I know, would I know if they come to my office, could I sign a check?
They would know. The treasurer is over all the bank accounts, the chief administrator of all the accounts, but there's gonna be like, it's Sherry and I and Christie and Crystal are the main signers on our accounts, the bank. Melissa and them have all theirs, Bree has theirs, but we can't sign on theirs. Bree, the bank knows who's on who's on those accounts. But like if Mr. White come in there and wanted you to sign a check, you can't, he can't.
So I, I really wouldn't need to be giving that advice to nobody. Okay, thank you. Is your motion?
I make it one.
A second. Motion been made by Mr. Fombin, second. On item number one, any discussion? All in favor? Five vote. Number two is consider and approve the resignation of James Mitchell, constable two, effective September 30th, 2021. Discuss appointing a replacement. Mr. Mitchell is turned in his resignation. Y'all should have a copy of his letter. And as of right now, we do not have a replacement for him.
I make that motion.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fombin and second Mr. Thompson that we accept the resignation of James Mitchell, constable precinct two, effective September 30th, 2021. Any discussion? All in favor? Five vote. Number three, consider and appropriate appointment John Brooks and Wilson White to serve as fire commissioner for Newton County Mercy Service District number three. Ms. Duckworth?
Yes, Judge. The district for ESC number three, they had a meeting this past, well, two Sundays ago. And they requested that Mr. John Brooks and Mr. Wilson White be appointed for alternate fire commissioners due to some of the commissioners worked out of town and not being available. It is my understanding this morning that Mr. Brooks has now declined. So he does not want to be appointed for commissioner at this time. Mr. White, Mr. Wilson White is still willing to sign.
Okay, are we talking about a reserve or are we talking about serving as a fire commissioner?
Well, they're commissioned as a fire commissioner, but they're actually like an alternate member. And it's, like I said, it's strictly, they did that because they're having trouble with the board members not being available to have the meeting.
So would they be, would they be named as alternate or would they be named as commissioner?
I actually think Mr. White is gonna be a commissioner because they're gonna replace the secretary. Mr. White is gonna fill that position.
Court, please, I'm not sure you can do that. I don't think you can have alternates on fire commissioner. Do you know, Courtney?
I don't think so either.
I think it's either you are or you're not.
Okay, so they can only have the four?
I'm not sure how, how the ESC is set up as far as their, their number of fire commissioners.
Just table it.
Yeah.
That would be my suggestion, is we table it. Mr. White is still willing to.
I make that motion to table it.
A second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fombin and second Mr. White that we table motion number three. Is in discussion? Not all in favor? Five vote. I'm forward to consider and if appropriate approve early voting location and voting hour for December 2nd, 2021, special constitutional amendments and local bond election. Ms. Duckworth?
Right, Judge. I have submitted before my suggestion for the polling locations and dates and times to conduct the voting. I just need to know how y'all proceeds with this. We do currently have 14 polls. And that would be all of our polls that we can have open. And I've also included on this with branch early voting. You can't just do it for one or two days like we have done in the past. You know, we had went through this before and I explained with law change. Now if you do branch early voting, it has to be the same dates and times as the actual early voting location, which would be in my office. So if we do branch early voting at Deweyville, that would be for two weeks, eight to 4:30, same as my office.
So is that something that has to be voted on by the court or is that something that's in the statute?
Has to be approved by the court.
We could approve everything with the exception of if they, if the court decided to.
Right, because it's either, it's either yes, we do branch early voting for Deweyville or no. I mean, they, they made it to where there's no in-between. Because in the past, we offered two to three days of early voting and it worked out, you know, okay. But since the law has changed, now if you do branch early voting, it has to be the exact same date. So I mean, it has to be the two weeks.
And these are the same boxes that we had opened up last time?
Yes, sir. Normally, I don't have this many for just the constitutional amendment election. But because we have a local option, you know, to vote on, I went ahead and included it with. Ms. Sherry had us do our expected expenditures. This is what I created the election expenditures on. It's based on 14 polls being open and doing the early voting. In case y'all decided that's what you wanted to do.
Okay. For y'all.
I mean, I'm ready to do, however, if y'all say go, that's what we'll do. We're prepared for however you want to do it.
In your honest opinion, how much extra cost would that be if we opened it up at Deweyville?
Actually, the call, the only, the extra cost would be because we do use our building. It would just be a matter of paying the judges to actually work it for two weeks. So it would be payroll.
Well, how much, how much they can make?
They make 13 million.
They would be from. What, the 22nd? Yeah. I was just, I was bringing up that, for y'all's information, it wasn't that I was trying to sway anybody one way or another.
And no, and I mean, that, that's, that's where the extra comes in, is actually payroll for that. Because, you know, we do have to pay the judges for two weeks.
Right, two of them.
Um, there was actually, when I do this down in Deweyville, we have four.
Four.
Because we have four because I can't obviously be there every day, so.
Well, everybody's just getting the same ballot this time, right? It's just a one, you can party, a party or anything doesn't have anything to do with it.
No, this is just everybody's ballot's the same. I did talk with the judge about how to do the ballots. I did shave it down to just four different ballots, because you have to have one ballot style for each commissioner. So we have four different ballot styles. But I'm going to separate them out, you know, for the polls and just to cut costs down, because the setup fee for eight different styles of ballots, it's just crazy. So I just had four different ballots set up, so one for each commissioner's precinct. That, that saved a lump sum right there.
The response, Deweyville?
We, we generally do have better voter terminals. I know the past, a couple of times when we did have early voting for two weeks and offer Saturday and Sunday voting. Sunday is in between churches, it's after and then before church.
What are you saying, a thousand? Probably a thousand down there?
We did have a lot of wire voting down there, especially. So, and I am offering that this time too, since we have a local measure home there. My office to be open for Saturday and Sunday as well. And I've got a bit of people that work out of town, especially pipeline, I've got a little Sunday, so.
Not gonna have anything in guest, huh?
Yes, sir. I actually did not receive any complaints about the poll not being open at the feed store. Actually, I had some that called and said that, you know, they, they really like being able to go to their forehouse to their sub to vote. That's where it should be.
Say you got two copies, drink them over now.
Shannon, could you move, mute that?
Working on it. Not sure who it is yet.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of squeaking. I think it's from Ms. Connie Smith.
Are they muted?
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Your motion?
I make it motion.
A second. I assume y'all are accepting it as presented.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Motion been made by Mr. Fombin and second Mr. Benson that we accept the approval of voting, early voting and voting hours for November election and special constitutional amendment and local bond election as presented. So any more discussion? Not all in favor? Five vote. Number five, discussing and consider award the construction contract 2017 GLO DR 4332 Harvey Road Improvement Project and GLO project number DR 20-065-0101-C274. Ms. Liz?
Uh, Mr..
I'll take it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Or a judge, mistress, this was on the rebid for County Road 2001 when we switched from doing force account work to having the contractor do all the work. We, we opened, we received and opened two bids on September 15th. The work was for 4,100 feet of road reconstruction. Subgrade prep, pulling up ditches, putting down limestone base for fill and for base material and then a two-course surface treatment chip seal. The low bid on the project was to Williams Equipment. And our recommendation is to award the contract to them. And if you approve it, I've got contract notices for documents with me to be signed so we can get this turned around and started as soon as possible.
Good, Judge.
You good with it?
We use Williams? We use Williams?
Yes, okay. I'm using.
Good, that's out of Louisiana. One of them will use.
Go then use. Yes, he did. Yes, he did. Stephen Darty's, yes, he did.
I make that motion.
Second. Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second Mr. White that we accept the bid from Williams Equipment for $280,919.93. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's a lump sum bid, there's no alternate to it.
No alternate to it.
And that's on item number five, is in discussion? All in favor? Five vote. Number six, discussing, consider award the construction contract for 2020 TDA CDBG County Road Project TDA contract 7220330. Ms. Liz, are you going?
I've got this one.
Okay, you got that one too, though?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Nick.
So this is on your 2020 TDA CDBG projects. Each precinct got one road. Precinct one, it's County Road 3064. We're doing 645 tons of old sand material. We had a base bid there that's for the county to go get the material and alternate bid for the material to be delivered. Precinct two, County Road 10,022, same situation, 645 tons of old sand material. Base bid was material only, alternate bid was to have it delivered. Precinct three is County Road 2001 again, working a different section of that road. And it was for 1,270 tons of limestone base material. Base bid was material only, alternate bid was to have it delivered. For precinct four, we're actually doing a construction contract, having a contractor come in and place base and asphalt on County Road 4128 for 750 feet of that road. We opened, we received and opened two bids on September 15th for this. And the tabulation is included in the award recommendation number that I've sent out. Our recommendation is to award alternate bid package one and alternate bid package two, which are the old sand materials delivered on-site to Gulf Coast. And then to award bid package four and alternate bid package three, which is Gene's project, to have a contractor come in and do the work. And take for you as to have the limestone base material delivered on-site to Williams Equipment. And then to reject base bid one, base bid two, and base bid three. Genius questions about where the asphalt would be coming from. I got with the contractor, had to provide a list of equipment that would be available, resumes, if we'd be working on the work, where they'd be getting material, who their material suppliers were. Looking at using prairie asphalt. They're out of Appaloosa, but they've got asphalt plants in Leesville, Appaloosa, and Lake Charles. Lake Charles is about a 45-minute drive from the construction site.
So they'll be hauling out of Lake Charles?
Most likely, yes, sir. You know, I would say Lake Charles or Leesville, but most likely Lake Charles. Of course, we will be there to make sure materials arrive as per fact, current temperature, whatever it might be. If we do award based on our recommendation, we exceed the grant funds by just under $1,200. So that would have to be made up for by the county.
Whose project? That's just lumped everybody's together, 1,200 or?
That would be for y'all to decide. Gene, technically, your project came in over budget at 67,000. We're, we're budgeting just over 50,000 per precinct. So that would be for the county to decide how, where the money, extra money would come from.
$1,200.
Yeah, $1,199.68. Just, just short of $1,200.
One, two. Eight?
Uh, just.
Eight?
Yeah.
We, I mean, we could go out for bids again, but I don't think this is getting better, so.
1,200, what, Nick?
It's $1,199.68 over the construction budget.
That's them delivering it.
Yes, yes, sir. It's, I think that's, I think your money head, having it delivered on-site versus having to go pay for trucking. You're gonna save more than $1,200 in trucking, et cetera.
You need a breakdown on this, Peggy, for your minutes? Or do you have it?
You gotta copy it.
That way, as long as you got the breakdown, that way you can put it in ten minutes. And let me have to break it back down.
How good it is, but.
Okay. Your motion? I make the motion we award the construction contract 2020 TDA CDBG County Road project for the TDA contract number 700-7220330. A second. Motion been made by Mr. White and second Mr. Benson that we approve item number eight as presented by Mr. Dick. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Six, five. All in favor? Five vote. Okay, number seven is public hearing on the 2020 proposed budget. More?
Okay, nothing has changed on the budget since last workshop. And if anybody has any questions? It's still the same as it was last week.
I don't have a question. I got a column here. Hell is, is that, it seem like the working man lose their job, then you gonna get second secretary? We rehiring people and letting other people go. That's just statement I got, and that statement is there's so much, we have cut so much.
Ooh, Danny's thinking.
This budget is real money or fake money?
Okay, on the budget for the general fund, we are projecting $861,297.12 of grant money to come in and balance this general fund budget. So it's gonna be grant money that is owed to the county. And every month at commissioner's court, we're gonna give an update on what we received that money and the grant money to go back towards this budget.
And how much each commissioner's getting, how much 500 or something? Dick, how bad is this solid waste? Is costing as much?
Yes, it's growing.
I mean, I'm just asking, if you got 100,000 increase, which you doing great job, but everybody else got cut.
No, solid waste is by itself.
Solid waste is by itself.
Dick didn't get an increase, he don't.
Well, I know, but aren't you over it yet?
I, I am over it, and I'll tell you what's been happening. It's been coming out of my budget.
Okay.
If that, if it would have been in your precinct, it would have come out of your budget also. Uh, I would have run out of fuel this year because of the amount of garbage that we are hauling. Um, which is, uh, we had only budgeted 14,000 last year for the amount, just, I'm just using fuel for an example.
Yes.
Uh, it's gonna, it's gonna be somewhere around 30,000 this year. So we was between 14 and 30 that was coming out of my fuel tank. Okay? So I'm trying to get back into my precinct, uh, what I've already spent out of it. Now, I'll be more than glad to give that sanitation department to anybody in this room that wants to take it.
You doing a great job.
Oh, no, no, I think it can be improved. By all means, it can be improved, it needs some new eyes on it. It really needs to be give to someone else for four years to where they can take what we have done to it and maybe make it better. Because my, I'm always big on somebody else's eyes looking at something. Once you do it for so long, it just becomes repetitious to you. And that garbage business is gonna be here for now. Uh, I'll just tell you this, when I first took it, we were doing two loads a week of garbage. Now, through all the hurricanes and uh, and the disasters all over four or five counties around us. I think the, them people has chose not to uh, rebuild in their communities and they have, the people that had houses that was give to them and inherited. I think they've come to our county now living in those houses and that's reason the influx of garbage. Deweyville, Oldfield, Toledo Bend, and Bondweir are, we're hauling 10 or 11 loads a week now of garbage out of those sites. The only ones that are still pretty much doing what they are doing since I've been here is Weargate and Burkeville. They're somewhere in a one or two loads a month range. That's, so that's not affected us a lot. Uh, but the repairs to our stuff is falling apart. Our, our electrical is, is absolutely a disaster, has not been worked on in over 20 years. Our boxes are rotted out, they're, we're dumping garbage up and down the roads. Uh, we have spent quite a bit of money on repairing the electrical and getting the garbage where they'll stay in the boxes. Uh, we have a compactor down at Gene's at precinct four now, is barely, barely limping by.
That's a. And we just replaced one.
And we did.
Well, we just rebuilt.
We rebuilt it. We rebuilt it twice since I've been here because we didn't have the money and the budget to get us a new one. The one, it, it is like a wagon wheel.
Since it stands alone, how much did we, did we budget to the sanitation?
We budgeted 400,000 dollars.
And I'm telling you it's gonna take every 10 years.
That came out of general fund.
400,000 dollar project is just as big as any of our precincts.
Correct.
Together.
Correct.
Should we consider putting, hiring somebody to, to manage it?
You know, where you going with money, Frank?
We gotta have a, we have to, we have to, three more times.
You know, we have cut the wages there. I mean, we took all them part-time people that we had, we got rid of them, we, now, now they'll, those, we have three, we have two full-time guys and three. No, we have two full-time guys and two part-time guys now that is running the facilities. To where we did have six or seven. So we've cut it. We have cut the budget, but, but the repairs and the, and the garbage collection has skyrocketed. Okay? Uh, and like I say, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to replace that compactor at Gene's. We, we can't repair it again, it's nothing to repair anymore. Now, the rest of our facilities are in fairly good shape. Um, I was told yesterday or day before yesterday that we needed to take another, we have a box in Bondweir, if I'm not mistaken, that is rotted completely out. I have a box for that. So we just need to go pick it up and bring another one down there. I got two spare boxes that we have rebuilt for the sanitation. Uh, most of those boxes are 25 years old.
Yes.
Okay?
So you got.
Of course, you know that.
You got two and two. You got two full-time, two part-time.
Correct.
This show and three and three.
Well, no, it's three, you got three full-time, got a truck driver, and that's something else, that's something else I want to talk about. We only have one sanitation truck driver, with CDL truck driver. When that guy is off, guess who gets to put, guess who puts the bill? Precinct three has to put a truck driver in there for about six weeks a month. I mean, a year, for all those days you get off and sick days and vacation, which is equivalent of about six weeks. So precinct three actually takes a truck driver from my precinct, puts in that truck and drives that truck for six weeks. But I'm taking away from my precinct for six weeks. But you got to drive it Monday through Thursday. And if everything, if you break down, you gotta drive it on Friday or Saturday to keep up with the amount of garbage that we're hauling.
So I'm saying, if you didn't fair to unload the, the whole burden on you.
Uh, been doing it for five years.
Well, I know you have.
I'd be more than glad for, I think it will be for the county. It would be an eye-opener for someone else to step in there for four years and see what it really takes to operate that. And, and not just opposing on one person that he didn't even know that that was part of his job until he got here.
Why not go rotate it? You take a month, you take a month?
No, no, you can't do that. You can't do that.
Not every four years?
You need it every, every four years. It needs to stay in that ma, because it's gonna, it's gonna take you, well, it's not now, but it'll take you six or eight weeks to get in the groove of, of it, okay?
Garbage.
Of the garbage business. And I think, I think we've all, we've sat down at a waste management, we've talked to that lady, their garbage, their, their quantity of garbage is going up. I think we predicted between now and next year, I really look for the garbage to go up another 20 percent. Okay? I really think that. So it's gonna grow again. It's grown that much in four years. It's gonna grow again. It's, it's not too, it's, yeah. I think it will eventually plateau. I think it will actually line out. Uh, but it's still, it is, it's a, it's an ongoing project. And if y'all have ever been to our dump sites now, they don't look like a dump site anymore. They are clean, they're neat, they're picked up, they don't smell, they're pressure washed. They have really come a long way, but it took money. Took money to do that. So I would be more than glad.
Kind of silver paper that it was serving. People find these old houses and, you know, we have silver paper, et cetera, hang out outside the highway, it's in the house. And then they pick it all up and they take it to your dump. And that's getting that house livable again and back on the path roll, but it's also taking everything that was in the dump that they did earlier.
Yeah.
And we want that to happen, but.
Well, what we don't want to do is, we don't want to restrict anybody to hauling anything to those dump sites. If you do, then our, our garbage crews along our county roads are gonna quadruple. They're, they're gonna dump it on the side of the roads if we restrict that. Not unless we do it in a sensible way. I, I don't like going out there on the side of our roads and taking a dumpster out there in a backhoe, and we've all done it. And we fill them dumpsters up because people have dumped on the county roads. I think our roads is the cleanest they've been in four or five years. Just my opinion.
You, you've done, you've done a real good job at all of them sites, especially mine.
Well, it takes every one of us. Takes every one of us to make this work.
Maybe we, maybe we need to take a little more responsibility for, for our, our precincts anyway.
I don't think you have time. I don't think, just like you was telling me down there, you was taking a guy for 16 or 18 hours out of your precinct, you ain't got the three guys. You take that guy out of your loop, then, then you, you might as well go home.
I cover whatever he's sick or whatever, and, and, but.
It needs to stand.
Yeah, I can't stand it, how can you stand, take care of all four precincts? I mean.
I'm just saying, we've always just pitched into that.
We gotta figure out something.
And we've starved our precincts. We have absolutely starved the people that were serving in our precincts because we're taking our people and we're doing something else with them. Okay?
Well.
And we don't have.
But we have, we have dedicated people now to it, and we got a budget for it.
That's correct, and it's, and it is running smoothly, the way we got it set up. It's running smoothly, and you, and you can tell that, if anybody can tell it, you can tell.
I'm working on it, it looks good.
Sound like a workshop item that we need to do, do a little more.
Just leave it like, just leave it like it is, just give me, just fund it, that's all I ask, just fund the operation.
Yeah.
All I ask.
Well, we, we took it out of their general fund, uh, am I correct, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, we took uh, 40,000 out of general fund and plus there's a state fee that we get revenue off of. And it was uh, budgeted last year at 25,000. And this year, we've already received over 49,000, so I budgeted this year 50,000. So we have 450,000 of funding.
And I do try to offset that cost a little bit when someone calls us. If I have a spare dumpster there, then I take it to those people, and those people actually pay the county. I bring the money to Ginger or Morgan, to Ginger and Kristen. So it does have a little bit of income coming in. But what's happened to me here lately is I can't hardly do that because I don't have enough time in the four days that I've got. Because I'm driving that truck every day. We don't have a spare truck, we don't have spare nothing. So when it breaks down, I come down here and me and Donnie, that's a city, we have interlocal agreement and he helps me. And in return, I help him when, when, when he calls me. So I got a backup plan and it seems to be working pretty doggone good. But it's, but it's a job, it's a job in itself. Uh, it is.
But you're willing.
I don't know how.
You're willing to carry on like you're going.
I'm willing to carry on like I'm going on till y'all figure out what y'all want to do. I inherited the job when I got elected. I did not know that the sanitation for Liden County was in a commissioner's realm of everyday daily work responsibilities. Until I got here about.
Well, if we've got a problem, we need to fix it.
I don't think.
I mean, it shouldn't be unloaded on you.
I don't think it's a problem, I just think everybody, I think it would do them good to really see it on a day-to-day basis for a little while, and then when it goes to someone else. Hopefully by then, you'll, you'll fine tune it some more, that's what I'm about. I think I've took it as far as I can take it, and it's like anywhere else, it's like Sherry running the numbers every day, every day, every day. It's time for her to, hey, you need to come do this, I'm getting, I'm getting, I'm coming up with a wrong answer. It's time for somebody else to come in there and look at it. So I think we, we, we've got some repairs that need to be done out there. We have got to get these some, we got to get some ramps built to where these older people can go into those dumpsters. Uh, that is yours especially, uh, at Phillips is another one. Uh, Toledo Bend, uh, Burkeville, and uh, Bondweir needs a, a, a ramp to drive up on. So there's some repairs, or not repairs, but some, some extra work that needs to be done there because our people are getting older. They can't throw the mess in the dumpster from the top of the ground when they're eight feet tall. So it needs about a five or six foot ramp. Me and Bill had talked about doing yours down there several years in a row, and just never did get down there and do it. But yours needs it as bad as any of them. Because you are just about the number one, Oldfield is just about the number one dump site out of all of them. With the most garbage and debris and stuff. So it was.
I, I know though, we done a lot of cuts this year.
Yes.
Now, don't want us come back in here next October, we can't cut no more.
I think if we stay in our budget like we're doing and if all the stars line up, if we've done it correctly, and I think we have this time, we've looked at every piece of paper. Uh. I'm a little concerned about it, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I'm not. But I don't know what else we can cut right now. You can't cut it out there. It is what it is, the past, the past sets the present for that. I mean, it's, it's there, that's real.
You know, the financial end more than anybody in here.
Yeah. I'm worried. I'm worried. The stars don't line up.
But I still don't think it's right that we budget hiring new people and laying people off. That's my opinion.
Are we talking about hiring new people for the uh, sanitation?
No, I mean like the judge.
He's, he's.
Going to get another secretary, they got Bud, helper in here. You know, we got people, the working people lost their jobs. And I call them low class, I call them the working people, the people that dedicated this county, we laid some off. I'm just throwing it out there. Back to you, good.
If you, if, if you want to continue with it and I can help you my, my end.
And you do.
But I.
There's not one of y'all that don't help me.
You can't run fast enough to give me that job. I'm proud of that.
At least John is.
I'm happy for you, you're gonna pick y'all. We do, we do, what we can do to help you, we're indicating.
Y'all do help me.
Yeah, what I'm saying, like, like on the uh, fuel, you know.
No, we got it covered now, no, no, I think we got, I think this last budget, I think we've got it figured out. I mean, I'm not saying it's to the penny, but I'm telling you, it's gonna be really, really close because I took every past record that we had in that office. And we generated those numbers. Those, those numbers are not just picked out of the sky.
Yeah.
We tracked that every day. Now, what I don't track every day because Sherry gets the bill or somebody gets that garbage bill, I never see that garbage bill.
We take care of that.
Yeah.
We take that and then we build a city for their part of it and we take care of that.
And that's something that we had talked about.
We had that budgeted in here.
That's what we had talked about a couple of months ago, and I don't know why, we're still doing that. That city needs to stand alone and we done, we've talked about that. We shouldn't be billing or affiliated with the city whatsoever down there, but they have an account with it. And I'll get with Donnie, or Judge can get with Donnie on that.
We can get with waste management so they can start.
Yeah.
I don't know how that was ever started, but that's where.
I think when it first started up, the best that we could tell when it first started, it was just, it wasn't that much. So, so the city, they was giving the city, the county and the city allotment of dumps down there. Well, now, it's, their business is triple two along with ours, so they just need to stand alone, and we've talked about that. The judge can get with Donnie.
To them with Donnie and, and all of them. More questions?
We, we don't get, we don't make any money off the city, we just.
No, we just.
We just have to handle our money.
For their part of the bill, is all we did.
And so you, you're okay with the telephones that were discussed, hold on?
Yeah, we just, I mean, I was, I didn't know it was even brought in court, I missed that. And I was under the impression that if you had, you had county phones, that you didn't get reimbursed for cellphone allowance. And I, you know, I was, the only two people were actually Sheriff Otis Lane and then the dispatcher was the only ones that have cellphone allowance, is what. Everybody else has county phones. I didn't realize that you and Owen both had both.
I thought we.
They didn't know that.
I thought we had dogs.
Did it was all that, was that passing court?
Well, I know we all talked about during, when we was tossing that back and forth up here about who really actually need them and who didn't need them. And the judge asked me and Philip, I believe, well, what about y'all? I said, well, normally when me and Philip are out there anyway, our phones normally don't work anyway. So it really wasn't doing us any good to have the county phone. And we don't get an allowance for our other phones, so it's good.
I did need clarification on that because we did have conflicting things. And from what I understand, I want to make sure with everybody, the cellphone allowance that's paid through payroll, the 45 dollars a month. From now on, the only, there's only four people that will get that. Sheriff Robert Burby, Chief WDO is Lane, Judge Ken Fleek's, and Emergency Manager, Owen Bean. No dispatchers, no.
See, I don't have any dispatchers still there.
No constables.
The dispatcher's gonna get them any longer? So you don't get allowance, right? Do you get allowance or not?
I don't think I have.
See, that's, I thought you had a company cellphone, a county cellphone. And I thought that's what the policy was, that if you had a county cellphone, you didn't get cellphone allowance. Isn't that the county policy?
That's, that's what it was and that's, that was my understanding.
And that's what I thought was in there, but I was also told that the dispatcher. And that's what I thought was in there. But I was also told that the dispatchers use their personal cell phones. So they need cellphone allowance. They don't have cell phones. All they get is the dispatchers.
We just need clarification. Who's gonna get it and who's not? They will mess with all their money.
I know, but that's just why the dispatchers, the sheriff, and Otis down there. Now, the judge and Owen, I thought they had county phones. They didn't get a cellphone.
I think we. County county cell phones distributed. The only ones that I have on my petty paper is Judge Weeks, uh, Sheriff Purvey, all of the constables, and Owen. And those people I've got that gets the county cell phones that is distributed to them. But I need confirmation to make sure.
I will send you an email.
On the cellphone.
Because I talked to the sheriff the other day, and he told me that the dispatchers and he and Otis were the only ones down there.
And so. It's through Commissioner's Court that the dispatchers.
That's been through Commissioner's Court. They've been getting that for since.
We're gonna change it.
Are you changing that?
Yes.
See, I thought that you weren't messing with the sheriff's department.
No, we are, but we. I mean, why are we paying a dispatcher to have her cellphone?
Well, that needs to be put on the agenda.
That with radio back, uh, the radio.
Okay, then we.
Down, then that's what the sheriff said, that they need their.
Then we need to replace it with a county phone then. If the sheriff and them think that that needs to be done like that, then they need to be replaced with a county phone.
Hey, Mr. Gary?
Shannon has tons of them.
Mr. Gary?
Yes, sir.
Come on.
Just recently, um, I I installed, uh, two cell phones, um, in the dispatcher's office, um, for emergency use. So that's, uh, Kiosera phones, and they're readily available, and they have hotspots in there.
Okay, so we're okay. So no, well, no dispatchers.
That way you don't have to give it to all dispatchers. There are just two readily available cell phones in there.
Thank you, Shannon.
And the deputies already have county phones?
Yes, they already have county phones.
All right.
So so just the sheriff and Otis?
And the judge.
The judge.
And the judge, but you have a county phone as well, right?
Yes.
So what does the county handbook say? Does it say?
Does the sheriff have a county phone or does it?
He has just his cellphone. He gets more allowance than the $45.
He gets $85. The other three will get $45.
I don't know. That's just what he's been getting.
All the deputies have their county cell phones.
What was happening is they had their own personal phone and a county phone, and we were still paying them for their personal phone, too.
What was that?
That was going on.
Well, that's what we're trying to stop.
And we just stopped it.
I know, and that's what we're trying to do, and.
We just stopped it.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a big issue.
The judge saying that I was.
I would like to see our judge to have as much communication along with our sheriff and our emergency management that we can provide for this county. Because at the end of the day, that's where the phone that's where the phone calls are coming to.
So to the county phone?
Correct.
Okay.
And their cellphone and their cellphone.
So you're wanting to pay them cellphone allowance?
Correct.
All right, so you need to make that an agenda item and pass it so.
I thought we did do that.
No, it was discussed in a budget workshop, but it wasn't put in. So I just was told that all the phones were cut.
Okay, we'll.
On the agenda item.
We'll fix it.
So so I'm still not right on that?
Thank you, Rada. Yeah, I thank you, Rada. We gotta thank you.
Owen is the only one that I'm taking away from this cellphone allowance.
Well, you don't want it, right?
I want it back. I want it back.
Okay.
Okay, so the sheriff, the chief deputy, and Judge Weeks.
That's correct.
Okay.
So is this gonna be the way from now on? We don't need it to be in the courts.
No.
It's the way it is. Nobody's gonna be issued a cellphone. I mean, nobody's gonna get cellphone allowance.
No.
Until at least after 2022.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it needs to be talked about. I mean, I don't think none of us is getting it.
Nobody.
Yes. And we don't even have a county phone. Well, like I said, at the end of the day, where we're at anyway, probably not gonna work anyway. I mean, there's lots of places in mind, and Phillips, you ain't got no phone service. I don't care what kind of phone you got.
You don't have radio service.
No. There you go. So I mean, it's not any use, and if they need to get ahold of us, trust me, we're easy to find. We ain't hard to find.
Yeah. Problem is when the deputy's being back.
Yeah.
I think we're good on that.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, number eight and approve adoption of the 22.
See, Judge, real quick, for housekeeping purposes, we need to close out the public hearing.
Okay. Okay.
That'll end our public hearing, something along those lines.
Okay, um, all right, we're gonna close out the public hearing, uh, process of now and move on to item number eight. And let's approve the adoption of the 22 Newton County budget and appropriate action with any appropriate action for sure.
John signs. All of we have chief in front of your page. You have your name up there again?
Huh? Yeah, handbook.
Handbook.
In the handbook, right there.
They're asking it except for the cellphone.
Yes, with the, yeah, I need to make that adjustment. The cellphone.
This is tax.
Right here. This is what I'm doing.
This is our tax.
Well, we have to do the tax before I can do this. So we're just basically gonna adopt this budget. And this budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by the amount of 81,452, which is 0.96% increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from the new property added to the tax room this year is $141,280. The members of the governing body vote voted on this budget as follows. You all have a check sheet? Yeah, with the exception of the cellphone or Judge Weeks.
As part of it.
Yes, remove the dispatcher's cellphone and add Judge Weeks' cellphone allowance.
Your motion. Back to motion, we approve the adoption of the 2022 Newton County budget and any appropriate act. I'll say. Motion made by Mr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Thompson that we approve the adoption of the 22, uh, Newton County budget and, uh, make the adjustment of the telephone allowance along with that. So, uh, any discussion? Not. All favor? You four?
Yeah.
You four?
Yeah.
And Mr. Benson, against?
Yes.
Huh? It'll be four, four, one, one against. Okay, uh, now we're gonna open it up the public hearing for the 21, uh, tax rate, 2021. Mr. Melissa?
Actually, it doesn't have to be here. It's a a meeting because the court has the tax to go within a new revenue rate of 0.728586, total $100 valuation. But since it's on the as on the agenda as such, does anyone have any questions? Good luck, Chris.
Any motion? Nobody has any any questions for Ms. Melissa on on the public hearing on 21 tax rate? If not, we'll close that out and, uh, go to, uh, item number 10 and, uh, consider and approve the order to adopt the 2021 tax rate of 0.2728586 for $100 valuation and tax rate constitutionally 0.665139 for maintenance and operation and 0.063447 for debt services. Ms. Melissa? Got anything to add to that?
Uh, no, sir. The other than, um, this 0.728586 for a $100 valuation is it will is with no new revenue rate. That is the rate that will raise about the or the same amount of revenue as last year. Anyone have any questions on that?
Okay, who wants to make that motion? I make that motion. Need to read that back in.
I second.
You want to read the motion?
Oh.
I'll move that we set the debt service rate 0.063447 and set the maintenance and operation tax rate at 0.665139, thereby approving the order adopting the 2021 tax rate set in the Newton County 2021 tax rate at 0.728586 for 100 of valuation.
You go.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Benson and, uh, second by Mr. Bondi, uh, any more discussion? Not. All favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no.
Aye.
All in favor? I will. Your motion to adjourn. Make the motion adjourn. You have a second?
I say.
Motion made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson, adjourn, 11 o'clock.